I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Claudia? Claudia?
Claudia is here.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Stephanie? Stephanie?
She's here.
And Al?
Here.
Is Jessie here? Jessie?
No, Jessie just indicated he will not be here tonight.
Noel?
Here.
And Joshua?
Here.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of up and to attend meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused this meeting to be publicized by having the date time and place thereof sent to the record, Ridgewood News and the town newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts' principals offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
Okay, I will read the mission statement tonight. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself, self, and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. We'll move into the public comments on agenda items only, and as always, there will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on anything else pertaining to Riverdale Regional. Mark will facilitate this part of the meeting if there are any public comments. Please raise your hand.
Please raise your hand, or you can put a comment as well. We have no... Oh, here we go. Barbara? Or maybe not. Looks like we have nothing.
Okay. We'll move into the presentation tonight. We have Lindsay Stefner with a proposal to name the Riverdale softball field. So Lindsay, if you're ready, just unmute yourself and you have the stage.
Thank you very much and good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. I know how incredibly busy you are, so I will not take too much time to present my proposal. I'm Lindsay Stefner, and I'm the head girls' basketball coach at Riverdale. I am also a proud alumni who graduated in 1998. I played soccer, basketball, and softball, and loved every minute of my experience at Riverdale. I had wonderful teachers, but I really felt inspired by my coaches during my career at Riverdale. One in particular really shaped who I am today, and I'm following her footsteps as a health and physical education teacher and coach. Her name is Brenda Canal. Coach Canal is a legend in the coaching community around the state, especially Bergen County. She is a pioneer in the Title IX movement at Riverdale, which has given countless female student athletes a chance to compete since 1972. She was a founding member in 1972 of the Bergen County Women's Coaches Association and is still actively involved. She is a strong voice at the BCWCA meetings and always make sure the student athletes' best interests are the number-one priority. Riverdale is a special place because it's made up of committed leaders, invested teachers, and hard-working coaches. Brenda Canal set the bar for her athletes and now for other coaches who are following her footsteps. Her coaching style was unique and effective. She was calm, cool, and collected, and very straightforward. She was never going to sugarcoat anything for you. Her teams were a direct reflection of her personality. She played with... We played with confidence and grit. She was a quiet leader who had patience with young players, yet knew how to motivate her older players and teach them to lead. Brenda Canal's coaching resume is extremely impressive. As a head softball coach at Riverdale, from 1973 to 1997, she won Bergen County Coach of the Year six times, won over 400 games, won nine league championships, five state sectional championships, four county championships in 1980, 1982, 1993, 1997, and her '94 team won the state championship. Coach Canal also coached volleyball early in her career and won Coach of the Year in 1977 while collecting 200 career wins. She also helped Riverdale win two league championships, a state sectional championship, and a county championship in volleyball in '77. She also likes to remind me that she served as a basketball assistant for two seasons early in the '70s. When looking over her resume, if you add up the number of seasons she coached at Riverdale, it's over 50 in various sports. Fifty. Coach Canal is a proud alumni of Riverdale and a longtime Riverdale resident. She is still a very big fan of Riverdale Athletics, and you can find her today or yesterday at the softball field watching the Hawks play. She is one of my biggest fans, as she attends all my basketball games in person or even virtually this season. She has been inducted into the Riverdale Hall of Fame, the NJSIA Hall of Fame, received the Mickey Corcoran Lifetime Achievement Award, and has received the YMCA Service to Youth Award. She has served as a mentor to me, along with many other athletes, teachers, and coaches at Riverdale and around the county. Coach Canal has taught me various lessons on and off the field, but the biggest message I continue to take from her is to give back to the community and be a positive role model for the next generation of female athletes. I try hard to give that message to my own players today as I empower future leaders on and off the court. You will have a hard time finding someone who is more iconic in Bergen County girls' athletics, and we are lucky enough to have her represent our great community for 30-plus years. With the 50th anniversary of Title IX approaching, I feel like the school district has an amazing opportunity in front of them. We can show the community how impactful Title IX was by creating a lasting memory for Coach Canal and all her student athletes. My proposal is to name the Riverdale softball field after Coach Canal. I believe she is a treasured role model, and this would be an excellent time to celebrate her and the positive impact of Title IX. She is a major reason why women like me had the opportunity to play, compete, and learn through athletics at Riverdale. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Lindsay. We will take this into consideration after the meeting, so nothing will be done here at the meeting tonight. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's move into the student member report. Noel, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate all the boys' golf team for winning their state sectional tournament today. That was pretty cool, and we have our senior barbecue next week for like the college shirts and everything, so I think everyone's getting really excited for that.
Okay. Joshua, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I know that the... I agree with what Noel said, and I know that the whole senior class is very excited that they're going to have a prom, and it's going to go through with that. Also, as you know, AP tests are going on, and everyone's really excited about that. I think, as I was talking with my peers, it was very surreal being in a room, and it was almost like a normal setting, and it felt nice because this is very similar to my prior experience with taking AP tests in person, and I think the school handled it really well, and I think my peers would agree with that.
Good, very good. That leads me into my report, and you know, I'm just going to briefly just discuss and say how happy we are to see that the governor is opening things up and that school, hopefully that the last six weeks of school will be back to as normal as it can be for the senior class. It's been a rough year. It looks like, you know, the prom is going to go off and be a nice experience for the seniors, and graduation looks like it could be almost like a normal graduation for us this year, which I think a lot of people are happy to see, that we can kind of close out this year. More students are back in the building. I think we're adding... Or surveys going out to the freshman class today or tomorrow to see how many of them want to join back into the school building as well. So I'm just happy to see everything kind of getting back to normal. So, and that's all I have today. So Patrick, I'll throw it over to you.
Thank you. I wanted to just extend my thanks to Stephanie for coming before us and with her presentation. Sad that Jessie isn't here because Jessie is on the golf team, and I was going to tease him a bit for his role. It was quite a wonderful opportunity for the golf team. I believe they won it in quote-unquote "overtime." So it was not a... It was not a straight-out match, and I congratulate them for their efforts. Now to pick up a little bit on what Mr. Graff had just mentioned, the sophomores returned today, I believe it was. The eighth grade also returned today. And when I say "returned," we've been surveying the classes individually and asking who would like to return to a five-day week in-person instruction. So that began with the seniors, then the juniors, the sophomores, as I said. Eighth grade was today, freshmen, and then the seventh grade. So I am hopeful that we'll continue to get more students back in the building. We still have a large majority of students that are selecting to remain remote. I suspect that trend will continue through the remainder of the school year, but we will have more and more students back in the building. I'm also hopeful that recent news regarding our own students and their desire to get vaccinated is moving forward. And today, I believe, the FDA authorized the distribution of vaccines to students as young as 12 years old, which for our particular population in the seventh through 12th grade here is a great milestone for us. So we are hopeful that the more and more students that become vaccinated, along with our staff continuing to move forward. We have about 80% of the staff that's completely vaccinated at this point, that we will be in a much better position once September rolls around. However, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we are still exploring the possibility of offering some type of remote instruction for those students that choose to do so or those who have a medical condition that would prevent them from coming back to school. A lot of that stuff remains fluid, shall I say, because we have not received any guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education, although I know they are actively working on it at this time. So I remain hopeful that the rest of the school year, as Mr. Graff said, become more and more normal, and that we will be back at a real full-time learning-in-person opportunity once September rolls around. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Let's get into the committee reports. Budget and finance, Joe?
Sorry, is I muting myself? No, nothing to report since last meeting.
Okay. Doug, facilities and security?
Nothing new to report since the last time.
Okay. John, community relations and technology?
No updates since last meeting.
Okay. Claudia, curriculum?
Yes, we do have something. Look at that. We had a meeting last week with Pat, and we talked about testing schedules. We've been put on hold for this year. We also talked about our updates to our curriculum for the state, and they've pushed that back to 2022. And we also discussed our lengthy conversation for about eight or nine years of the program of studies and possibly reading out some of the classes that no longer students partake in and removing them off the program of studies. So this conversation is continuing, and we hope that we will have a resolution before this committee ends in December. Right, Pat?
You will certainly have a report. Whether or not it resolves, a nine-year conversation remains to be seen.
I thought for sure I was going to get him this time. Dang. That's it.
Good answer. Okay, policy and governance, Stephanie?
We also met this past Monday, and on tonight, you'll see a first reading of a policy. The board has engaged in conversation about possible rotation of leadership or how we might go about that, and the place that it landed was in policy. So I think it's been going on for at least a year and a half, maybe two years, that it sort of comes up and maybe goes by the wayside, and it comes back around. So we were able to look at... Pat got us two different school districts' policies that essentially were the same, given the conversation that the policy committee has engaged in. There could have been a rotation that went about. That was one possibility that the committee wasn't comfortable with, given that some people might not ever want to be in a leadership position. And then there were conversations about the possibility of sort of doing it as a vice president into president kind of, you know, tied-together thing, but the committee felt like this best reflected the intention of the conversations that have been had. And so it will have a first reading, but just to give some context or conversation to it, it would say that whoever was elected to president could serve for two consecutive cycles of the board, and then they would be a year off and then could be renominated again for that same two cycles. And it's just meant to give opportunity to leadership. It's meant to give... We have been incredibly fortunate that we've never had conflict among our leadership and administration, but that does happen over time. And so it also kind of gives space in which if that were to come about, that wouldn't be a terminal situation for either the administration or the board, and it would not reflect any change in leadership that exists now. If the board wanted to renominate people who are sitting in current leadership, then it would start during reorg, when we reorg again in 2020. That would be the term. So that's sort of where we landed, and that's what's on the first reading tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Let's get into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for consent?
So moved. Stephanie?
I'll second Claudia.
Excuse me. Mr. Graff, before we vote, I just want to make mention of the fact that on our section regarding the Regulations 5132, that was my error that should have been on our last board meeting because that was part of the second reading of that policy from before. So Mrs. Arvin didn't mention it because we should have brought that forward before. And just before the meeting, I sent to the board, there were three minor errors on the attachments to the board as far as three different salaries are concerned, so I sent you the correct salaries, which will be included in the minutes as we move forward. Thank you.
So the 5,000 series, are we still voting on that tonight? Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, Tom. When you are ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay. The first vote is going to be under number 11, miscellaneous C, and this is what Stephanie was referencing. It is recommended by the superintendent that a board approve the first reading of the following bylaw, the 9,000 series, 9121, Election and Duties of the President. Does anyone have any questions? This is the first reading.
Yeah, I have. I don't ever remember, you know, discussion on that we should limit the term to two years and all. This came as a complete surprise to me, anyway, and I don't think we've changed this policy for 40 years. We've never really had a problem, and I don't see why we have to limit the presidency to two years. My opinion.
Okay. Just to give you a little background, this was brought out of a committee meeting. That's why...
No, no, no. This was brought out of conversations in executive.
Yes.
Okay. Several years ago.
When I was in charge of policy, we started this last year. We had this very conversation last year.
This is Joe.
Yep.
I guess my issue with this and all too is not... Because when we say giving other people opportunities, every year at reorganization, the entire board nominates multiple people, and then it's put to a vote. To restrict future boards on who they can have, because I guess what I'm concerned with is, as somebody who has served as president, it's... You have to be able to be on the board for a few years, in my humble opinion, to be able to run the meeting properly, to know all the rules that you're supposed to go through. I think that there's... What we'd be doing is hamstringing future boards, because if you lose some of the people that have been on the board before, and you're saying, okay, hey, somebody's been president two years, now you can't suppose you got a lot of new board members again. So I'm... Once it's put through a motion in a second, I am going to vote no, just because of the fact that I believe that what we're doing is creating a policy to limit people, to limit the options that the board as a whole has. So thank you for your time.
Okay. And anybody else have anything?
I was just going to say, I mean, the genesis behind this was so that, not to hamstring the board, but to add variety over the years and opportunity for other board members to bring their viewpoints and opinions to running the board. Anyone that is, you know, serves two years can come back following, you know, after one year off the board, so it's not like we're exiling anyone in that manner, but it does, I think, to a degree, forces the board to have more variety, which I feel over the years would be beneficial.
Hi, it's Tracy Allen. I just have a question for clarity. What was the longest-serving president prior, in prior years? How many terms?
Vito?
At least six.
I'm just curious to see if the policy is necessary. I understand its origins and its intent, but I'm not so sure that it's going to change anything except limit the person that may be able to perform the duties.
If I can just interject, I've been thinking about the question about how long somebody has been president, and I go back a number of years. It's generally been about three to four years that somebody has been president of the board before it's been turned over. It's just my recollection.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say before we put it to vote?
Well, we haven't had... We don't have a motion. We have a second first, Al.
I'll make the motion. Stephanie?
And I'll second it. It's Claudia.
And if I may, because Tom, I think I am the longest sitting board member at this point, I want to say, because I know I served for five years straight.
Okay.
That was the most, and before that, I think Vito, it was four years.
Yeah.
And that's in the last 13 years. So, and I know Al has served the last couple. But just to answer Tracy's question, I don't think it's been more than five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Consecutive.
Anybody else before we vote? Okay, Tom.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
No.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
No.
Joe?
No.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Okay, let's get into the second vote. Miscellaneous, number 11. D, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the reading of the following regulation, 5,000 series, 5132-R, Dress and Grooming. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Stephanie?
I'll second it. It's Doug.
Does anybody have any question?
And again, this is just the companion to the policy that was passed at the... Some policies come with regulations, some don't. So this is just a regulation that was inadvertently left off of the policy that was already approved.
Okay. Anybody have anything? No. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to old business, new business?
If I may, I rarely would do this, however. I think I want to give the boards a heads-up that I have been having a conversation with both Mark Wachter, who's been facilitating our virtual meetings, and Mr. Trainor, who is our normal videographer, about returning to in-person meetings. I have been talking to them about a target date for June 3, which is the night that we would do our honors for service recognition retirees, et cetera, et cetera. I am exploring with them on a method of trying to keep the participation of the virtual audience while we're in person without us having to work through a computer, and we'll have some alternatives, one of which just may be that we would be able to stream the meetings, as an example. But for our next board meeting, I'll have something for us to discuss in a more concrete format, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads-up.
Anybody else have any old business, new business?
Al?
Just on that point that Mr. Fletcher brought up, you'll work out the logistics for social distancing and all of that for the public, obviously, or we won't allow the public?
Yes, John, that would include participation and attendance by the public.
With the appropriate social distancing and screening and everything.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So Al is unable to attend delegate assembly this year. So Al is unable to attend delegate assembly this year and he so nicely asked me if I would do it instead.
I said please.
Yes, you did. It's totally fine, especially because it's virtual, so I don't have to drive to West Windsor or wherever it usually is. And so that is actually this coming Saturday and I thanked the business office and most especially Stephanie for signing me up and, and doing all of that and then double-checking again today when I didn't get an email. So I will let you know at the next meeting what was discussed, decided upon, and everything else that happened there.
Thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? New business, old business? Okay, let's hop into the public comments. Could be anything pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. Raise your hand and Mark will take over. Mark, do you have anything?
Nope. Nothing, no comments and no raised hands.
Okay. Give them a second look before we close out. Okay. May I have them all ready for John?
Motion?
Claudia? Second?
I'll second it. Stephanie?
Stephanie, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Stacy?
833. 833, Tom.